That's what I heard, yeah.
Who hasn't been?
This year I haven't.
Oh gosh.
You shouldn't even, no, you shouldn't have done that.
No, I shouldn't even have said that. I'm sorry. I have to, I have to make it to Saturday though because my cousin's kid's getting married and my sister and I are going to it.
But after that.
After that, okay. Anything can happen. Okay, well, we'll call the April fifth Planning Commission meeting to order. And first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Then, adopting the agenda, does anybody have anything that they want to add to it? If not, we should have a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then the Planning Commission minutes from March first to approve those. And I didn't see anything for myself, so did anybody else have any questions or comments or additions? We won't subtract. If not.
The move that we adopt.
Yes? Okay. Did I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
No.
Right. Alright, so then we come to signs, which we had talked about some last time. And we have some additional information to maybe consider for today.
So, Honorable Chair and Commissioners, I wanted to kind of talk through a couple of kind of key points and get direction and guidance from the Planning Commission in order to be able to take that direction to the City Council with a recommendation. The ordinance itself and some of the language may need more tweaking ultimately based on the conversation, but there are kind of some key concepts that I want to, I think, more clearly understand Planning Commission's direction relating to. So, in the city's design guideline, or in the city's sign ordinance, the city references the design guidelines. And by doing that, we essentially have said that signs are, need to be in compliance with the design guidelines. Because we do it in the mixed-use districts, it then gets applied to the industrial district as well because the industrial district says signs as permitted in the mixed-use district plus X, Y, and Z. So, what that means though is if you go through our design guidelines, we in the mixed-use district have varying language for each district on lighting signage, but we say that you can't internally light signage at all. Essentially, we say it's stronger in one district than in another, but if you read it, it suggests that there is no internally illuminated signs allowed. So, by reference of the design guidelines, our ordinance states that you cannot have an internally illuminated sign in the city of Maple Plain. So, it's what it is. So, we had a question come up on the industrial park about a sign. We reviewed the ordinance and we said, and they wanted to put up a sign that everybody else had in the industrial park, and we said, the ordinance doesn't allow it. So, rather than you apply for a variance, let us at least talk through this. At the same time, we have signs in the mixed-use district, in the downtown district specifically, on the building we've granted three variances to, or two variances, and they came forward and they said, we'd like to put up a new sign and we wanted to match the other signs. And so, what do we do? And we said, well, we need a variance. But before we grant more variances and everything else, we had discussion on signage. That combined with some of the businesses in town have approached the City Council members, I think, the mayor included, about they want to be able to put up internally illuminated signs because they want the visibility and whatever else.
Yeah.
So, the, the, the kind of first question that I have for the Planning Commission, and maybe these can't be separated, but I, I kind of look at them different, is should property zone industrial be permitted to have internally illuminated signs? Now, when we start talking about internally illuminated signs, there are provisions that we can write, and I think this group has expressed some direction or provided some direction relating to. And that is, we can all agree that box lit or cabinet lit internally illuminated signs aren't permitted anywhere in the city. So, those types of signs that have a clear acrylic panel with a bunch of, a bunch of message on it and then the whole thing's just lit up.
Yeah, and they turn yellow.
Right. So, that type of sign, we could just write out of the ordinance by definition of what can be internally illuminated. So, then the question is, in the industrial districts, we have two industrial districts in the city. One is the Business Park, I call it, one is the kind of boat storage, other park. Would we permit internally illuminated channel lettering in those two districts? And should we look at those two districts separately from the mixed-use district? So, that's one kind of point or one question that I have.
Do you want to talk about that now?
We can either break it down, or, so, it, it leads into my, my second and third.
Go ahead.
My second is, if we are to allow internally illuminated anywhere, we, we can, I think, all agree that it should be channelized letters only, so they're individual channeled letter, or individually created letters that are internally lit, mounted maybe on a track, but they're not connected. And so, I want, if we go to internally illuminated, that's what I want to, you know, talk about, and I did provide language in the ordinance, which, which suggests that. And then the third thing is, within the mixed-use district, there was discussion, I know by some of council, and I think at the last meeting a little bit, about could you allow internal illumination for signage that is on Highway twelve? And could you treat that differently than buildings that are not on Highway twelve? And I want to have a discussion on that. I did look at it just myself, and I looked at all the businesses on Highway twelve from aerials, and I kind of just thought through where everything's located, and I started to, I started to draft some language to that effect, but then I, I kind of pulled back and said, I don't know how you differentiate.
No.
I don't know how you treat a business that has physical frontage on Highway twelve different than a business that doesn't have physical frontage but has visibility too, or is a block off and has none, right? So, I don't, I don't know. I looked at some of the scenarios. So, for example, the United States Post Office doesn't have frontage on Highway twelve but is totally visible from Highway twelve. McGarry's has no frontage on Highway twelve. So, then I, when you're looking at that and you start thinking about that, you say, okay, well, there's an insurance building and a barber shop that has frontage on Highway twelve. They would potentially get some kind of different signage treatment than a building that's a block off but is plainly visible from twelve, and then why differentiate? And what are you really trying to accomplish with that? Similarly, in the Gateway District, the MPFC is likely not going to have Highway twelve frontage in like two or three months from now, and you'll see a plan that's coming in where we're putting a new public street between the MPFC and the highway. So, then that would cut off that building from twelve frontage, but clearly it's going to have twelve frontage. So, the que, and then, and then you'd get really subjective if you started to say it doesn't have physical frontage, but, oh, you can see that one, but you can't see that one. So, I, I didn't, I don't have a good solution on how to differentiate. My opinion is, we determine what makes sense for that particular district, and we put a standard together that makes, that accomplishes what we're trying to, to do with that. So, those are kind of my, my three things. I drafted language that would essentially allow the industrial district to have channelized letters, individually channelized letters. I would, it would also allow the mixed-use district to also have internally illuminate, illuminated individual letters.
Are you talking, well, a whole bunch of things?
Yeah.
You know, come, and, and I think that my, my first reaction, I'll, I'll say one thing. In the entire time that I've been in this town and anything that I've ever done, something has always come up about everything that's ever been decided. Make the sign thing and you say you're clarifying it, and somebody comes along and says, I don't like that. And so, I want to do something different. So, I'm not looking at this as the cure for everything because it just isn't going to be. Somebody's going to quibble about something because they always do. They don't, they don't like something. I'm uncomfortable thinking that all of the different parts of town would have different kinds of lighting things because then I don't think you have the, the unit, unification or the clarity or the vision of what people were thinking for the city. It's, it's like for today, somebody comes in and says, well, our definition for Gateway is blah, blah, blah. And instead of thinking for now and the future and the whole town, you're saying, well, that can look like whatever, and that can look like whatever, and that, and that's part of the reason why we sat down and did the, the design work, why you have the comprehensive plans where you're trying to pull everything together. If, what you're suggesting and what I thought about after our last meeting was to say, okay, here's, here are the things that we prefer. Here are the guidelines, reference the guidelines for all of the city, including industrial, however you get about it. And if you said, here are the options that you have. You know, we prefer, well, maybe you don't even use the words prefer. You say, we backlit, blah, 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 blah. And then the, what you're talking about here where you're saying kind of individual letters, kind of what we've approved for the, the building over here, that I never remember, and I apologize, that I can never think of the name of the building.
Fifty, I know by address.
And, and so, if we said, that's an option, and this is an option, and here's an option, and some of the other things that are still there where it's certain percentage of, you know, your wall, if you're looking at a sign, you're looking at monument, you have all of these definitions. If we give them another option, okay. I like the idea that, that it isn't, you know, a big rectangle and, you know, four hundred, whatever. I'm not the best person to ask about what do you see when you go through a town because I'm looking at things like so entirely different than business people are. I, I don't think that we can say that if you're on twelve, you have to be absolutely facing twelve, you know? And if you're McGarry's, ah, too bad. I, I don't think we can do that. I think if you give options for it, I think, and it's all uniform in, in the whole city, then, then that's a better option than, because what it becomes otherwise and what business owners want is, whatever I want, you give it to me. And I, I'm sorry, I'm not going to agree to that. Go ahead. I don't.
But I think some of what you've got to look at too. What do you want in Maple Plain for business? Do you want national businesses that can afford anything? Or do you want a local person to open up a store? Be friendly, be local? They can't afford you. When I opened my store, I had a gal hand paint my store. The second sign, I had a sign painter professional paint a piece of plywood is what I used. If you'd have said that I have to go out and, what does a new sign? And it says butterflies and berries, how much money would that be?
I don't think that we're telling somebody that you have to have a lit sign. I think if you're saying.
You couldn't have a hand painted one? That's in there. And that would have been a deal breaker for me. I never, never, ever could afford that sign. So, what do you want for Maple Plain? Do you want what there is in Delano? Do you want a caribou in every city? Or do you want that local person?
Well, I think we've said that we want them to be local. I think that we've talked about that.
Then you better look at being a little more business friendly. And I, the industrial areas are so far away from the rest of it. Why would you want, if they all have one type of sign, why do you want to put a strange sign in there and get away from the look that they already have?
I think we've handled those kinds of things with variances. And I think it goes to, again, Marjale, the concept of what we're trying to do, thinking of what we have now and looking also towards the future. Otherwise, we might as well not have guidelines. We might as well not have comprehensive plans. And, and I think that asking someone to be able to, you know, put, you know, a lamp behind their, or along, you know, their, their signs, they all know that they're going to have to advertise in some way or that they're going to have to put some kind of a sign on their building. What we're saying, like we do for lots and lots of things, is here's what we would prefer that you do. Here are your options for what you do. Because otherwise, it is, well, go ahead and do whatever you want.
I don't think what he wrote says, go ahead and do what you want.
No, what he, what he was saying is, is we're adding another additional.
We'd add another option, which is the one we're getting asked the most about.
Yeah.
So, we're making, if you were to allow some sort of internally illuminated, you'd be giving business owners more flexibility to get signs. What we've heard from some of the sign companies, and I don't, I haven't, I haven't, I don't think anybody's priced out, you know, gone and said, give me a quote on this sign versus that. But what I've heard from the sign companies is, the halo or backlit signage is more expensive than internally illuminating, the, the letters even. So, there's been pushback that, oh, we can't do it. Now, the Liquor Depot did it.
Yeah.
And they pushed a little bit. They said, ah, whatever. They got a, they got a quote, and then they came back and they said, I'm not messing with the variances. I'm going to just do what's permitted, and they did it.
But they're not in the industrial area either.
No, they're in the, they're in the Gateway.
As I read the design guidelines, it, it says for most of the areas that internally lit signs should be avoided, but it doesn't necessarily say.
Well, like Gateway says avoided, the other one says not permitted.
Downtown is not permitted.
Right. But all the ones we've dealt with the variances on are the downtown.
Bud and twelve, I think, says avoided.
That's thirty-eight.
Page thirty-eight of the design guidelines?
Yeah.
Should have marked this.
Right, but, okay, so if you go, usually you'll go to the most restrictive, and the ordinance only references the design guidelines for the sign ordinance, not. So, then the industrial park, which one of those do you apply?
And then you said that it had gone to.
Which standard in the design guidelines do you apply to industrial? Because industrial only says, right, because industrial is not talked about in the design guidelines.
Right.
So, by reference, it's included, but then which one do you apply? And then it says avoided, but to me, it's.
That's, that's kind of.
It's strongly implied, and then that's what I said, in the downtown, it says, no. You can't have them.
Well, as I recall from, you know, when they were developed, that the intent was that downtown should have that more of the small-town pedestrian, you know, painted sign with, you know, downlighting and that kind of thing, more of a, a personal pedestrian, small-town flavor to the downtown area. And then once you got out into the other mixed-use areas, Gateway and Bud, then it opened up more to the internally, to allow internally lit signs, not, not the, the full panel type, but the individual letter type. And that industrial, I, I don't really recall much about what we said about the industrial area. I think that was probably left to be, you know, not as important, if you will.
Well, and, and I'm not remembering a lot either, and part of it might have been because at that moment, everything was kind of built up and it was there, you know?
Is, is there, wasn't there a, a group, isn't that industrial area?
Not anymore, not for years.
A group, what do you mean?
They used to have a group of themselves that would kind of police their, the industrial park over.
I think they had their own.
Yeah, but not, not for years. Yeah.
I, I'm guessing that the, the intent behind saying internally, internally lit signs in the other non-downtown mixed-use areas was to allow it, but still, you know, try to have some of the same architectural flavor as the downtown area, but realizing that's going to be a little more corporate, it's going to be, you know, bigger businesses.
And corporate or, or, you know, the corporate identity is, is clear in any of these where it's saying, yes, we recognize that there's going to be a corporate identity.
So, I'm, I'm fine with those, like suggested internally lit signs for non-downtown mixed-use areas, and maybe making it more clear or explicit that.
And also industrial?
Well, I, I don't know about industrial. I don't think we really addressed the industrial, so we're forced to try to make some interpretation, or some interpretations.
What, what would you say the industrial area over there has now?
So, Pioneer Creek, Pioneer Creek Drive, right?
Yep.
Is the, you know, Proto Lab in that area? So, that area has mostly internally illuminated signs, but.
Yeah.
By, by literal read of the ordinance, it's not permitted because we have, we have, we have a weak link in there. It's, it, it may be just semantics, but either way, that needs to get cleaned up. And then we got to decide, do we want to allow it? And then also the area over on, on nineteen and, and what's the crossroad there?
Industrial.
Industrial, yeah. Thank you. But so, nineteen Industrial, I mean, that little quadrant in there, and there are internally illuminated signs in there.
Nineteen Industrial, nineteen doesn't intersect with the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does.
South of the railroad.
Oh, oh, down, a little south, okay.
Yeah. And, and they don't have real good signs on any of the buildings anyway, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, nobody really has anything crazy because there's not real highway frontage or anything, you know? So, they have their own, you know, they have like Nelson's Landscape or whatever, they have one out in the front.
Yeah.
You know, that's a little monument-type sign, but.
Yeah, not that visible to residents. Industrial areas, obviously not that visible to residents.
So, so the rub's going to be like, with the Gateway District, MPFC, that building has all intern, all internally illuminated signs.
Yeah, they are.
As, as you go down that street, then you get to the bank, they have an existing electronic display sign. Liquor Depot has a backlit now halo because they.
Right, because they did, yeah, because all of the others were kind of there before.
Collision Corners is not, is it internally illuminated?
I think they, they have.
I think they have, they have lamps over the top, so theirs is semi-compliant. But then on the other side, you got Blackwater, whose sign is compliant, but then you've got the building next to them.
They're the ones with the variances.
They have all the variances.
Yeah.
Then you have the library, which is internally illuminated.
Yeah.
So, if you were to take out the mixed-use Bud Avenue or downtown district, which is, you know, basically the, the post office, McGarry's, City Hall block, and set no internal illumination there, one of our business owners that real, or the insurance agent there.
Variance.
Okay, but then you're going to have variances pretty much on every face of every building.
Well, I think that what we, well, how we looked at that one building was because it was, it did look, and it had been set up that way, when we thought about if anybody ever built over there, you know, like if there was a new development, then they would fall into the guidelines.
But I would argue, and I, and I would only argue with you from an administrative standpoint, if I have a business owner that comes in, and the bill, like the building I'm talking about is that, that, whoops.
American Family Insurance.
American Family Insurance Building right here on the corner.
Oh, yeah.
They want new signage. They want internally illuminated signage. They want it, just like the other building has it, and they're saying, well, they get it, I want it. I'm an insurance agent, you gave it to a other insurance agent over there. How do we, how do you say, well, no, no, you got to apply for a variance just like them. I don't know if you'll get it or not, but, you know, give us your money.
Well, I, I look at that, that there are no signs, and so in my mind, it's a new building, so to speak.
Well, no, they've, they've got an internal.
Yeah, it's a box lit sign right now.
They've got a box lit over on this side of the building, but they want to put signage on the Highway twelve side, you know?
It is.
I don't know how you're going to, I don't know how you're going to differentiate. And then when the new guy comes in with a new fancy development and they have businesses who come in and say, I've got to have Highway twelve signage, they're going to say, well, they've got it, I want it. You know, so my thing is, if, if you grant one variance, it's fine. If we grant six variances, we need to change the ordinance because we're obviously not. We're obviously applying something that we don't agree to.
Right, so putting in the options here would say, if you're going to, if we say, here's the option, Mr. horrible-looking building, and you want to put a sign up like that's going to make any difference to that building, then if this is a part of it, then that gives them an option. It's not a variance, then it's an option, right?
If you were to say, we would allow internally illuminated signs and we classify those as the language.
For any of, any of the area, any of, any of Maple Plain.
Yeah. It, it's a departure from the design guideline vision for downtown, which was small-town signs. The issue is, you've, you've got the, the farm supply, you've got the Gordon James Building, for lack of a better term. You've got the library. You've already got a bunch, so to rein it back is going to be hard.
Yeah, but the, the bunch, and, and I don't know how, obviously, we're not succeeding. And, and so then it becomes, well, it's a crapshoot and let them do what they want. The, the library with Hennepin County, they were there. So, and Hennepin County kind of is, you know, they muscle themselves in here and they go, well, if you want us here, this is what you're going to get. And then you have to have people stand up and say, no, this is what you need to do. With hardware store, feed store type of thing, we worked with them about all of their signage, everything from the thing that went up in the air and, you know, having the arch lights and all that kind of stuff to work on something like that. And so, if we give people another option and say, here are your choices. If you don't like any of them, don't put up any signs.
Right.
Or.
Or come for a, or come for a variance.
Yeah, and, you know, be, because, again, to my very first point, I, I am telling you that we will have this all down. We think we're helping, we think we're making this clear, and somebody's going to walk in the door and go, this is what I want. How dare you not let me do this? I'm going to lose all my business. Don't you want my business in town?
Well, yeah, and that's, anytime we set precedent with anything, not just signs, but, you know, that's like with the pole barn thing. That's why I voted against the pole barns because it was precedent-setting, and now, you know, anyone who wants a two-story pole barn in a residential area can point to those two that we approved.
Yeah, no, you're right. I'm, I am not opposed to, you know, adding another choice, as long as it's not this and they try to be as creative and thoughtful as possible. they try to be as creative and thoughtful as possible, and if, if somebody comes in, I mean, no, I'll keep that coming.
Well, is, is, is the better avenue to have them come in for a variance and work with them that way, or does trust that they'll come in with a package that?
Well
No, cause I, I think your point of, then it's just a whole bunch of variances all the time, is saying, um
Well, like with the, with the Columbia Farm Supply or, whatever it's called now, United, we did work with them, and they, and I think the only internally lit sign
Yeah. Yes.
was on the east-facing one, so kinda facing the highway, and not sort of facing the downtown side, um, and then I guess the big sign up front too, which is Highway twelve.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, you know, that was an opportunity to, to work with them to change.
Well, they still, they still have to have a signed package, right?
They do, if they're a multi-tenant building that comes in new, they're supposed to have a signed package on file
Yeah.
with the city, so they have to go through it once, get approved, total sign for multi-, multi-tenant building. So, like, a Farm Supply or uh
Insurance Building.
The Insurance Building is multi-tenant, I would say they, they need to come through, get a, a package approved, that's my interpretation.
Yeah, because Yeah, well, and that's what they've done.
But like the Liquor Depot, um, they had to come through for site plan, and then they tied, we tied that to their signed package, but they didn't, I mean, technically, they, they wouldn't.
But any of the people along the MPCF world kinda did whatever they wanted, and then
We've approved permits in there, um, based on that gray area in the ordinance, as long as they met the square footage requirements. Um, so we have kind of a running tab on MPFC right now, and as long as they were consistent with what was there. So like, the, the channelized internally illuminated letters, we, we've approved a couple.
So, the, the two-tone building that wants something new, do they have to do a signed package, they come to us?
They'd have to submit a signed permit.
Permit, they go to just the city council?
I believe it's a signed package. I believe it's a signed package, I don't know if you've looked at it on, on theirs.
I don't know for them.
Right now, it'd be a variance for what they want, because we don't allow it, so if we were to amend the ordinance and says, that says internally illuminated signs, if they're channelized letters, whatever, whatever. They may still be in front of you for a variance because they have a hard time meeting setbacks from Highway twelve. They have to be ten feet off of Highway twelve, and I think that um, produces a problem for them, because of the proximity of the building.
For a sign?
Not on the building, a monument sign.
They want a monument sign.
Yeah, or like a pole monument sign.
Yeah, everybody want, okay.
But, but the internally illuminated provision applies to, like I said, that building, uh, the Gordon James Building, they came, Gordon James himself came, or John came in with a sign for his business on that building, and it's, matches everything else that's on that building, individual ladders, the whole deal.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I thought I kicked you, I'm sorry.
So, we said, we said, just go on hold if you're okay with that, and let us figure our end out before you apply for another, you know, for a third variance on that building. Now, we told him he has to do a signed package though, regardless.
So, uh, so, not the green insurance building, but the gray one on, uh, next to the post office, that one?
Yeah, that's the one we've granted it to, so we, I'm talking about both, but, yeah, John Quinleben, who owns that building,
Okay.
has come in now with a sign request for his own business to have a sign, and he has the same sign people, I think, maybe it's different to that person now, but they just said, well, these are the other signs, so this is what we'll do, and, yeah.
Well, I don't think that it would hurt to add something additional to their choices.
To allow internally lit in the downtown area?
Um
And clean up that industrial would allow internally lit, and the Gateway and Bud would allow internally lit, but they have to be individual channel, individual letters, and cannot be box-lit signs.
The only part of that I'm still resistant to, I guess, is the downtown area, certainly makes sense to me for the Gateway and Bud area and industrial um, problem. Um, but if that, like, again, go back to your first point, if, if the intent of the look for downtown is what the design guidelines show, which is adopted by the city, um, by allowing internally lit signs, would it be, I, I think that's
It's gonna change.
It's gonna change, yeah.
You know, an option is not to do anything, you can, this is, you know, we're not trying to come with a recommendation, we're just coming with, you know, what we've heard from some
Right. No, I understand, and it's, yeah, and it's, it's definitely a, I see both sides.
You're right.
Right.
And I would, I mean, this is just my, my aside, but if, if the option is we like the design guidelines, and we think we should enforce the design guidelines in the downtown, that's good too, because then, then as a city, we should probably say that, and then enforce that, right, so then if a variance comes in, we can, we can say
Well, yeah, and we should have them saying that, yeah. Too bad.
No, we really wanna change this area, and even though the guy next to you has it, if we would've, if, if we would've upheld those as a city on that one building, we wouldn't have any non-conforming signs anymore, on that building, right?
Yeah.
But, you know, you don't, you, you, you don't know what turnover's gonna happen, somebody could be in that building for twenty-five years with the sign that they put out there, and you, you don't know that answer.
Yeah.
So, so it is that question, right, do we wanna allow, the council ultimately gets to make that call, they're gonna get pressure from business owners because they are getting that pressure.
Yeah, and, and, and somebody always caves.
Right.
So it's, it's, it never works, I mean, none of this is ever going to happen, it just isn't.
Don't say that, I, I think it's, I think it's a great vision for the city, and, and you just, it takes a long time to get to it, right, I mean, it's, it's hard to get to it, and
Yeah.
the more you enforce it, the, the more values created, and the more people choose to comply with it.
But look, look what our track record, I feel like I'm a Debbie donor here tonight, but look at our track record for enforcement of stuff. Pretty dismal.
Well, I think, I think though, I think if the council's behind it, and, and, and says the city, this is important, this is the vision we have for our downtown area, any area, this is the most important. You know, Gateway, again, opens up with more, more corporate, and, and Bud Highway twelve probably even more so.
Yeah.
Um, and industrial is out of sight, out of mind almost, um, if we say the downtown area is this important, uh, to create the kind of look and feel and, and image that we want for the city, then we should stand behind our convictions on that.
Do you think the council can?
Yeah, I think, um, not only will they respect the decision of this commission, but I think, you know, we talked at our last workshop about it, and there's a lot of desire to keep it kind of that small-town, kinda like the Excelsior look of where it's more,
Yeah.
you know, and so, we did go back and forth about the Highway twelve thing, and we recognized it would be difficult to come up with guidelines for it, it, but it was more a visibility thing, you know, if we wanna draw some of these businesses, so, we didn't come to, you know, a firm answer either, but
Yeah. I think that, that was good in concept, but I agree with Mark that in, in reality, to implement that would be very difficult, yeah, cause, yeah, you know, Main Street's not that far from, from Highway twelve, so I
Yeah. Very difficult, yeah. Yeah.
I think we can, we can cross that, that checkbox, um.
So if we said, um, all areas, including industrial, except for downtown?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, um, just to kinda reiterate what you were saying too, um, like, last month, I was in Hayward, Wisconsin, and at, at the Berkey race, and same kinda feel as Excelsior, you know, it's, um, you know, that kinda vision is, is what I'd like to see here, and that was what was envisioned when the design guidelines were built, that was a little before your time here, but, um, I think that kinda look and feel, um, really, I think, says Maple Plain, and to your point, I'd love to, uh, give, um
They could have painted signs with, with a lantern over it.
They could have painted signs, yeah, and, less expensive, and still has that, that, um, small-town, more personable feel to it.
And maybe would be more likely to be in the downtown area than in one of the, by MPFC, or, you know, Gateway or the bigger ones anyway, just because of their size, they would be more likely.
Do you feel that there's a difference between the north and south side of Highway twelve through that downtown area?
Downtown doesn't extend, you talk about into the Bud, Highway twelve area?
Yeah, the difference between, I think it's a good question, so downtown M U D, which is our downtown, goes from Blackwater to the fire station, or water treatment plant.
Yeah.
On the south side of Highway twelve.
Outside of that.
Bud Street, mixed use, or M U B, goes from
Bud.
Bud Avenue to Wank, basically.
It's the, yeah, the north side.
Yeah, and, and I think that, from what I'm remembering, that was purposeful, so we did see a difference.
Yeah.
Because we figured that this would be on this side, just because of the lack of homes, um, would be more business, more, um
And it would be oriented more towards Main Street, it would be, you know, Main Street would be the corridor, uh, focus would be there, and as opposed to the focus being on, on Phase twelve.
Yes. Yeah.
Do you, okay. But you've got them right across from each other, do you want on the south side to, well, homemade signs, and over here, this big blaring?
Again, I see it kinda, I was gonna look for a picture here somewhere, I sent here, again, with the orientation of the buildings, it's more towards Main Street, not towards twelve, so, yeah, the
If you put a business right there, you're gonna be looking at twelve.
But not because of how the roads are, there are a lot of roads that don't even access twelve, I mean, they can't pull off onto it, so they're still gonna be oriented to, um, um, Main, to Main Street.
Trying to create an old Main Street, you know, from McGarry's all the way, you know, down several blocks.
Which is part of the reason, I mean, besides the DOT, but part of, part of taking away the access onto twelve, on, on that side in particular, and I think if it gets developed up in, um, the Bud area, they'll, they'll limit access there as well to Highway twelve, cause that's what the DOT does, but, um, you won't have, everything is going to be geared towards, looking towards Main Street.
But they're gonna be advertising towards twelve?
They're still gonna have their main frontage sitting towards the side streets, towards Main Street, just because of the fact that's how people are gonna get there. And, um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not uncomfortable.
I see the area north of twelve being, I'm, I'm okay with that being different, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it is.
So what, what, um, so what you're looking for is a recommendation that we do Gateway, um, Bud, and industrials this, this way.
Yep.
And leave, um, the downtown area as it is.
Yeah, so in the, in the language right now, we say, uh, design guidelines, signs located for permitted uses in these districts shall conform to the city's design guidelines with the following exceptions. We will, we would add, I would add one more letter in there that just states, um, M U B, M U, I mean, yeah, M U B, M U G, and I would be permitted to have internally illuminated signs.
Oh, I get you, okay.
So I, I would, I would clarify that, it's gonna trump the design guidelines, the design guidelines as a whole is, is not an ordinance, it's a guideline. So, it's gonna, it's gonna trump that, and then it's gonna clarify that internally illuminated has to be this, um, and it can't be neon, which it states in the design guidelines too.
Yes.
And it can't be plastic-faced cabinet signs, um, internally or externally illuminated, so it's just gonna clarify it, the only clarification I would make in that is that the M U B is gonna stand on the design guidelines only, we won't accept them out.
Okay.
Right.
So that makes Gordon James Building what he just asked for?
That's gonna make him not get what he's asking for if that were to be upheld, yeah. He'd have to come in with a sign that complies with the backlit.
Or another bearing.
Uh, overlit, underlit.
Or another bearing.
Or variances.
And, and so it starts, I mean, for as many times, I think that we thought that businesses would be there for a long time, I mean, I think you always think that or hope, that kinda thing, and for as many times as it's changed, you're right, it could be what we had wanted to be, to begin with, if we had just dug our heels in.
That building get built before design guidelines?
It was right on the cusp, and it was one of those kind of, this is an editorial comment, it was kind of a, I'm gonna do what I wanna do, and there were people in certain positions that said, yeah, go ahead, and so it did, it happened.
I, I think I remember too, where the original concept, the building came in really quite block.
Yeah.
And, and staff and, and, and planning commission at the time worked with them to
Right.
give it some more interest.
Right, and, and they didn't do what they were supposed to do, which included, you know, they're literally right up to the sidewalk, they took any kind of, um, landscaping away, it was, it was, it was an interesting time.
Um, I should, I got a question, but I, I suppose I should know the answer to this, but industrial area, is mixed use, really?
No.
It's not, but if you go down in the, if you go down in the sign ordinance, and you go to industrial, it says all permitted signs in, uh, one, one fifty, twenty-five, be mixed use in office. I don't know if you, if you, if you read our ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, we say, we do residential regulations, and we drop down to mixed use in office, and then we reference back, anything in the residential district's permitted in mixed use in office, and then a couple other things, and then we do the same thing for mixed use in office, when we drop down to industrial, we say the sign guideline, or, or the, the provisions for mixed use in office apply to the industrial and a couple other things, so
Yeah.
Kind of like
It was like an afterthought.
I don't know, it's, it's not atypical.
It made sense at the time.
It's not atypical, how you write an ordinance, it's just, it, it does confuse it, the, the kicker for us, and more than just Nicole and I read it, but, um, is this reference to the design guidelines, and it's a broad reference to the design guidelines, cause it just says that signs shall conform to the city's design guidelines, period. And so then in the design guidelines, we have a couple different kinda provisions.
But nothing really specific to, to industrial.
Right, so it doesn't say in industrial, they should go with the mixed-use B design guidelines or whatever, so
So when we update this, we need to include all of the, all of the areas, I, I know that when we did this, because of how it, you know, when Minnesota design peoples came, I think we were looking at what ended up being the three key, you know, downtown, Gateway, and Bud, and, and so it was kinda like, let's kind of go with that, but we, we did leave the others out.
Is there a interest or desire to loosen up industrial area, uh, sign ordinance even further than, than this, to allow for box signs or anything else?
I think individual channel letter is good.
Yeah.
I think that's what you have, or you have existing businesses that have, you know, if you have an existing sign, you're allowed to replace it, so, like, Wank's sign is actually a box
Yeah, it is.
sign, right, but it's not really noticeable, um, K bid sign, they're industrial, they're a box-lit sign, and they can replace it, even the car guy on, um,
Yeah.
that we, the
Total Auto.
Yeah, Total Auto, I forget the guy's name, but the guy we had in here a couple times, his is a box lid, but he swapped out the panels, and we say you can do that, you know, as long as it's the same size and everything else, so
Panels, yeah. Yeah. So when they need to change it, then we'll go
Yeah.
So then, what we would recommend?
You would recommend it, I'd fix the language, I'd take it to the city council in an ordinance format for adoption, and then they'd either
Okay.
review it and, and say we like it, or they say, no, send it back to you, or they'd say, change it.
Okay.
Those are their three options, so, um, but if everybody, I think I've got really good consensus on it, so it would be to recommend adoption so it'd be to recommend adoption of changes to the sign ordinance, which would allow internal illumination in the industrial, mixed use Bud Avenue, and mixed use Gateway. And it would continue to, um, it would, the, the sign regulations pertaining to mixed use downtown would remain.
Remain, okay.
And then you don't have anything in here on the Gordon James Building?
The Gordon James Building would have to come forward on its own merit then, following a consideration by city council. So if council were to follow the planning commission's recommendation, and he still wanted to come forward with his internally illuminated sign, he would need a variance.
Right.
But, I don't know that that's the end of the world, because he needs a signed package anyway. Because we've gotta do a signed package for his building, because it's never been done, and we've been piecemealing it, and I've told him, John, you really need a signed package approved, because then that would, that would solve any future tenants having to come forward, because maybe you guys just say his building forever can have internally illuminated signs, and that's part of the signed package, I don't know, but.
Well.
But, but either way, it would help his tenants, because each time a tenant comes in.
They have to go through.
They have to go fight it themselves, if I was a landlord, I'd want it fixed, so that I, I can not only tell you what my rent is, but I can tell you, you get this for signage.
This, yeah.
It's a lot cleaner.
It's, yeah, it's time for him to do that.
Yeah.
Well, then, um, I, we need a motion to do what?
If you wanna make the motion for what I said, I can.
We'll make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? I didn't hear your voice, Mardell. You can abstain?
I wish we'd have included something on the Gordon James Building, but.
Well, they're down, they're downtown.
You can do it at the variance, 'cause we don't have an application, he hasn't applied for it. I, we asked him to specifically wait, not knowing the outcome of this, and, uh, he's, he was okay with that, so.
And he's worked with, not to say that he's going to do it, but he's worked with the city before, in particular, because of, you know, Blackwater, but, um, they're part of downtown. I know you like making exceptions, but.
Can't really, sort of, immortalize that in the ordinance.
That's, that's what, that, that's what variances are for.
I'm not gonna oppose it.
So that's a yea then?
I guess.
She says yea.
I guess you can abstain.
Okay, and, um, keeping in mind, um, I know that you, you wanted to say something to us, I, I want you to be able to go and graduate.
No, let's, um, okay, so we passed that motion, so, um, I mean, we don't have any other agenda items. So the only thing I was gonna say, um, is that at the May Planning Commission meeting, we're gonna be having a, um, land use application for the, um, Gateway area. Um, so get, so get excited, yes, yes.
We got this middle.
Yes, we got the plans, we have the dismissal, um, the one thing is that we need to change the date, um, as Bobby and I are gonna be out of town on the normal date, um, so we are going to do it on May tenth, Thursday, May tenth, at six P M.
Okay, does that throw it into that, um, second?
It's this, it would be the second.
Second Thursday, yep.
And that, okay, Mardell, then we have issues with you. So say again, so it would be, um, the tenth?
Yes.
I have a conflict that A two, I need to try to get out of, but.
We can see, um, let's see, I mean, if it's sounding like an issue for multiple of you, we can take another look at it.
We, well, we'd have to.
About two thirty eighth?
Um, 'cause we'd have to make sure that, um, if there were two gone, we can't have any more Barb, Barb roles.
It would be nice to have, especially with something this big, we'd like to have everybody, you know, um.
Well, like this, yeah. What did you say for the other choices?
I don't have any other choices at this time.
I'm sorry.
Um.
Why don't we send out a poll to you guys?
Yeah, we, I can talk to Bobby tomorrow, and just knowing that it's not gonna work for Mardell, and you have a conflict, um.
And then however we're communicating, I, I haven't heard from Barb either, for, I'm thinking that she's gonna be back soon, but we need to communicate with her too, that we need to, to know about that particular date. And, and in particular, like you said, it, it, it does sound like it's something to be excited about.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, this is good.
Oh, this is good.